All right, it's eleven o'clock. I'm not calling meetings to order. We'll call. Jessica?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
And I'm also here. Maybe he's been propping.
Yes.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a volunteer to read the mission statement.
What can you do?
Thanks, Jessica.
The Mount Horev Area School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Thank you. Two A is approval of the agenda. We'll entertain a motion.
No motion.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to B is approval of the July 18, 2022 board meeting, regular meeting minutes.
No motion.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to three, addressing the board. Three A is school news.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. It's August the first, which I believe is typically the start to fall as the kids start coming in. We've had our first practices. In fact, our first ballgames are just right around the corner in the second half of August. Also, a number of opportunities to invite our community in. We want their feedback and engagement on a host of topics. Of course, next Monday night is our annual meeting that takes place over at the intermediate center at 6:00 p.m. We also have a survey out to families right now with regard to calendar for the upcoming month, next two school years. And that survey will close on the 19th of August, so still time to complete that. And then we had a candidate forum from our community so that they could hear from the candidates for the state assembly seat, the 80th seat being vacated by Representative Sandeepo. And then last but not least, we also have our facility steering committee. That group is getting underway. It's a group of the community legislative engagement team. That group is meeting on Tuesday night, August 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. over at the high school. So lots of opportunities to get involved. We want to hear from our community as much as possible. And certainly, if I can give any help to folks in that effort, don't be afraid to give me a buzz.
Thank you, Dr. Slarnock. Board members, do you have any school news? All right, we'll move ahead to three B, citizens' comments. Citizens' comments? All right, we'll move on to four. Four A is our personnel transactions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five, our consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica, to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to our discussion items. Very excited for discussion item six A, your presentation by our FFA about their fishing trip.
Which is fresh from coming from Culvers. It's FFA.
The shellment is real. I don't know how great school teachers are.
So this is our 53rd annual Canada fishing trip. So, end of June. So, this is all the people who went to the trip. People who went are Matthews in the back in a blue shirt, Kate Sakovic is in the red shirt, I'm in the gray shirt, and then Jack Jones is in the green, and Anavea is in the red. Anavea's mom was a chaperone, so it was kind of cool. And then Mitch in the black raincoat, he was the EMT, so he helped with a lot of things. Yeah, so the people that went, and the rest of them were chaperones.
I told the students I'd jump in on just a couple slides, but a lot of people wonder why, you know, why is a fishing trip an FFA activity? And one of the things FFA does is teach leadership. And by going on an extensive trip like this, they have to work together and form committees, and have a list of things that they have to decide about and get things done. And because it is extensive and we go in the middle of nowhere, you have to really plan ahead. And so that's kind of the idea. And you'll see the mistake I made here in a second. But, so anyway, go to the next one. This is the FFA mission, and then, you know, here's all the teacher stuff. I mean, FFA is really about building character, healthy lifestyle, promoting leadership, working with others. And so this is a, for lots and lots of years, we've found this activity to be something that helps us achieve our goals. Okay. And one of the things that, you know, learn some outdoor skills, one of our chaperones, Matt Sutter, is, actually, I think it's YouTube, isn't it?
Yes.
They're cleaning supper right there. So, I mean, we bring a lot of food, but we have to, our protein, we have to catch and prepare. And so those guys are hard at making sure that we got something to eat. And we have lots of people involved behind the scenes, of course, the admin and you for the school. Our school nurse has been involved with our trip, just helping us plan to be safe. All of the chaperones are FFA alumni members. We also work with the Ministry of Natural Resources to secure permits to go on Crown Land, which is also part of the Swaghi of Djibouti Nation. And so there, we're friends with them, too. And then we also have a business that we work through, Vista Lake Outfitters. And they help us if we earn the pin. Basically, they're the ones that know where we're at, which if we ever would have an emergency, that's important. We take a satellite phone with us and have all of these emergency numbers, and they're kind of on stand, you know, we just, they're helpers behind the scenes on that, so.
Okay, so one way we pay for these trips is the Mount Horev Holiday Sale. That's a big way to fund the trip. And the Culvers Petting Farm thing, that was today, two very big ways to raise money for this trip. You can go to the next one. Where is Jutton Lake? It's about 750 miles from Mount Horev. It's about straight north from Mount Horev. We take multiple stops on the way up there, stop that quick trip, get food, get drinks, go to the bathroom. So yeah, it's a long ride, but it's pretty fun when you get to spend it with your friends and talk about whatever on the way up there. You can go to the next slide. That is a picture of Jutton Lake where we're staying. Out on the little tip of the island is where we were. And then where the marker is, is about where we would clean the fish. You can go to the next one. So, how did we get there? We drove there?
Yeah.
The reason there's like a no eggs thing is because at the border, they took all our eggs we had.
That's part of where I spoke.
Yeah. Well, we didn't really know, so we took them. And then it's kind of a funny thing that happened is, there was four trucks on?
Yeah.
We had four trucks. And then Pam, you were in the first truck then?
Yeah, they knew, they knew.
Said that we have eggs, you know, because you got to tell them. And then Matt, at the very end, didn't know that we had eggs. So he's like, we don't have eggs. And then he's like, oh, actually, I guess that's because we do have eggs. So, that was kind of funny. So.
We had to take one truck and drive back across the border. And the border, an American were laughing, calling us really bad at egg smoking.
Yeah.
So anyways, the egg teacher should know this, it's because of the avian flu. And we're highlighted, Wisconsin is like a normal place. And so we took them to a store on the other side of the, back in the American side. And it's within an Indian reserve, and they gave them to their food pantry and elders. And so it all works out. They said, as long as you don't bring chicken. Meat, we're okay. Eggs, we love, but they were so tired of eating chicken. I guess a lot of people have made that mistake. But anyway, that was, if that's all that's bad going up, I guess. So we were pretty lucky we didn't have any mechanical problems or anything.
So that is part of the road that we have to take to get there. So it's, what did you say, about?
Two hours?
It's a two-hour drive through the woods.
Yeah, two-hour drive through the woods. At first, when you get off the road, it's a logging road. Is that, is it still active?
No, it's been a few years, it has.
And then that part is farther in, where it used to be a logging road, but now it's overgrown enough that it's kind of just like a trail that's used just enough that doesn't overgrow. Yeah, so that's about it. That's just a picture of the lake. We took this picture because we were going to go to a waterfall on the other side of the lake. But the water was so high, and it's a kind of a treacherous path to get through the water in the first place. And, you know, the rushing water didn't make it any easier. So we took this picture from a different vantage point where we went to instead of the waterfall. So you can go to the next one. So that is our camp, I guess you could say. The right is where all the tents were. So that's, our tent is the first one on the left side of the picture. And then the one in the middle, kind of, you can't really see, is Kate and Jack's tent, and Anavea's is on the right. And it keeps going farther, and there's more tents. And then, in that picture, I think, is that before we set up everything?
Yeah, before we set up the cook tent.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's where the cook tent goes. And then, so it fills up the area. It's pretty tight in there, but it's just about perfect. Almost like we went there before. So, so yeah, it's pretty cool. And it's fun to see how like, how quickly we can take stuff up and down. Because, and how the same it looks, like, because you clean up pretty well. So, yeah. Just more pictures of the lake, the lake at sunset. Yeah. That was me preparing lunch, because lunch every day was peanut butter jelly sandwiches, maybe two if you wanted to, and then a candy bar and an apple. So every, it would rotate between the people who made the sandwiches for lunch. And, you know, we just had different chores to do. You had a kitchen crew some days. And, yeah.
That's a nice fish.
Yeah, that's, we all caught a lot of fish. I don't think.
A lot of people caught, everyone caught both types, right?
Yeah. That's the biggest fish we caught. It was a 41-inch northern. And it was caught by Anavea. So that was pretty surprising to find, because, I don't, do you get any of those?
Usually a couple a year.
Couple, yeah.
It's a good place.
Yeah, it is. It's really good for fishing.
How long did it take her to land that fish?
It's a good question. Probably, because I think she was, I don't know, she was using a small pole. She was trying to get a wall height.
Oh, my gosh.
And then she caught that.
So she had some fun.
It was really just luck. She was jigging in like five feet of water. Yeah, and then that shot it up.
Boom.
Yeah. And then, yeah.
That's amazing.
Kate Sakovic on the left. That's me on the right with my biggest northern. That was about 30 inches.
Huge, dude. Nice work.
Yeah. On the left is a chaperone, Jeremy Krantz. And then on the right is Jack Jones. On the left is me with my wargunning fish. It was too small, and I had to use little grippy things so I could get my finger through the gills. And then that's Anavea's mom with a pretty good-sized northern. Mitch and Matt Sutter with their fish. So, we were, we went on a hike. Matthew said to cross that river to get there. There's a waterfall on the other side. And that egg we found on the floor, this, so there's a path, and then there's not really a path when you get to that point on the group picture of us. That egg was just there.
Candice's back.
Candice's back duck. So, that was kind of interesting to see. And kind of, it looks just like a chicken egg. So we get there, and it's just, it looks like a chicken egg on the floor. It was just weird.
This whole egg thing.
It's me.
You're the egg.
Yeah. And then that's the lake, not Jutton Lake, it's Savant Lake. And we couldn't get to the waterfall, so we just took a group picture there, so.
Oh, wow. It's your picture?
Oh, yeah. So that's a picture of a caribou. It's a, they were really far away, but it was just a young one in the water. And then on the right, there's a, what, what word?
It's an Arctic tern.
Yeah. And they look kind of silly, because they have really flat heads. So. Those are just group photos of us. Top right was when we just crossed the border. The one to the left of that, where me and Logan are, bear and a moose, was at. Like outside of Dairy Queen. Dairy Queen in Minnesota. Yes. So is the big one on the left. That's us outside of Dairy Queen again. And then the one on the bottom right was just us on the island. It was really windy that day. More pictures of the lake.
And that's our trip?
Yeah, that's just. Then you slept well.
Oh, yeah.
It was pretty easy. I'm sure you did.
We were tired by the end of the day, for sure.
Welcome to both of you. Thank you so much for representing the club and for giving us these beautiful pictures and sharing your memories with us. You've set the table nicely for next year's trip, the 54th annual.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if we can call it annual anywhere.
We can.
Close.
Close enough. And by the way, we didn't introduce you when you came up.
Oh, I'm Logan, where? I'm Matthew Moer.
Two really just outstanding young people, come from fantastic families. You know the names well, and how fortunate we are for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Great pictures. Guys could make a calendar, and that could be on the.
Some really nice photos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. We have to go back to the pictures.
Okay, moving on to six B, committee member report, starting with buildings and buildings, grounds of transportation.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take that. We had a nice conversation at our last meeting, which was two Mondays ago, and we advanced one topic for the board's consideration. And that's what you'll see on the agenda tonight as it relates to these repeater signals that I've been talking about. We've been working with the police department on that. So thankful for that committee taking the time to hear us know.
Great questions. All right, community and legislative engagement.
And I put four B.
Would you like to elaborate on that? I mean, all I know is we held the forum on the 25th, and our next meeting is on the 23rd. Those are the, those are the two things that I know about this committee right now.
And we, and for those of you who didn't get a chance to see the video, thank you, Bart Liedfried. By the way, Bart put together the video for us, and just days later, that's up on our district's website. So feel free to look that over. It was also the lead story on the 10 o'clock news that Monday evening. So we did get some great support from local media on this. I want to thank all four candidates, four of the seven candidates who found time to come to the forum. I would probably put about maybe 45, 50 people, Jessica and Carly. I know that you were.
Probably about 30, about, right?
Yeah. And I think it's getting some traction in the video, too, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for hosting.
Oh, thank you for your partnership in doing that.
Oh, you think it was your idea?
Carly's idea.
It was a good idea.
Yes, it is.
All right, moving on to finance committee. Jim, do you want to give us your report?
Yes, so we met July 18th. Pretty light. Finance committee is coming right off the audit, which I know Scott and staff put a ton of time and effort into. So audit went well. Pleased with everything, as you, my guests, Scott and team have everything buttoned up really, really nicely for the audit team. So things went well there, and we just went over the draft of the annual meeting booklet. So Scott just went through that. So that was good. And then we're set to meet about a month from, in September. September 12th is our next meeting.
Thank you. Questions for Jim? All right, we'll move on to six C, our referendum ballot discussion. Do you want to introduce?
Yes. Good evening again, board members. You'll see attached here a proposed referendum ballot that we've put together with the help of our bond council. And we're proposing just for basis of conversation here this evening, the potential for an operational referendum to take place on Tuesday, November 8th. And we've suggested that the dollar amount, for purposes of conversation, to get the conversation started, would be to take the base amount that we had in our survey of our community, as well as the second option in our, in our survey, but forego the third option in that survey. And when we total those figures, it is about $4.82 million. The good folks with our bond council, their job is to put this into some kind of language for the board to consider. Now, this is not an action item tonight. That would likely come if the board so chose at the next Board of Education meeting. But suffice to say, thank you to the board for allowing us to have a survey that was shared with our community here a couple of months ago. And that has really driven the formation of this question. With that, I'm happy to speak to any questions you may have.
I don't think we're there yet. I think this is not nearly as transparent as it needs to be. When we talked about the, the survey, I had reservations about it. I think the, those concerns were addressed. I don't think they're addressed in, in this question. I, I think it raises more questions than it answers for someone who hasn't and isn't familiar with the ins and outs of operating referenda and how these, these kinds of things are, the language that's used with these kinds of things. So I just, I, it's, we're not, we're not there. And I think, you know, I, so I, you know, I, we're just, we're just not there. We, people don't know, don't have a clear sense from this language that this revenue limit is going to be raised indefinitely. I mean, they, they can't know that from this. They can't. And I know that there's, there's some, there's, there's a legal meaning to the inclusion of this, the language about recurring purposes. But that doesn't tell me anything about the referendum. It tells me about the purposes of the expenditures. So I, this is, so I think, I think what we need is something, is something like, shall the, shall the Mount Horev Area School District, et cetera, be authorized to exceed the revenue limit, beginning with the 2023, 2024 school year, and continuing indefinitely or until such time as the voter's resident in the district shall discontinue this authority by securing a majority of the vote in a district-wide election? Unless that authority rests with the Board of Education, then we could simplify that language and simply say that, or until such time as the Board of Education discontinues that authority. But we, we have to give some sense to the voters that, hey, listen, trains leaving the station, and it's not stopping. It's not stopping. And you, you just, you don't know that from this, from this language. You just don't. So I, I renew my, my concerns about how we are describing this, and I'm willing to obviously work with, with folks on an amendment to this, to this language. But I don't, we're, we are not well-served by, we are not well-served by, by this language. I mean, I don't, I don't want to be the person after this passes, and someone comes up to me at a football game and says, hey, well, that was great. You know, we got, we got the stuff done that we wanted to do in the 23, 24 school year. But when does it stop? When does it end? And, well, it's not. Well, and it's going to end like in four or five years, right? In like six, eight, 10? No, no. Trains left the station. It's gone. It's gone. It's not stopping. So again, I, we're not, we're not there.
Rod, can you say your provision again?
Sure. So let's see, beginning with, by the way, I have a question for Dr. Slarnock. We can probably clean this up. Is the authority for, for de-authorizing this, this question, does that authority rest with the voters, or does it rest with the Board of Education?
I don't know the answer to that. My guess is because it's authorized by the voters.
Voters, it is.
It would need to be deauthorized by the voters.
Okay, that's what.
But it would mean the Board of Education would have to write something like this to go onto a ballot.
Right.
But the voters couldn't just be like, hey, I want to write this in on the ballot.
There is a reason why this language is worded as it is. I think, I hear you, and I am appreciative of the comment. This is attorney language, because they're meeting their requirements under the, under the statutes.
Yeah.
I think it's incumbent upon us to do the education of the community.
Right.
About what does reoccurring mean. And as you've seen already in some of my letters that I've been writing to the editor, I've been trying to clarify that. And I will continue through the other kinds of engagement sessions with our community. But your point is well made. I would be happy to have the bond council be present, if possible, for, at least for a phone call at the next board meeting, if, if you had concerns about the actual wording.
I do.
Well, if the full board does.
Yeah, I mean, I'm right. You clearly know that I do. Yes.
I think it's a fair question. I hadn't thought of, and going back to what we had learned during the survey process, confused people say no.
That's correct. That's absolutely.
So I'd hate for anybody to read this and be confused. And, and my question was, I mean, not necessarily a criticism, but, so we're saying 4.8, which is questions one and two. Should we split it up? I don't know. Like, I'm not sure if we should have it be two questions, or if we should bundle it all together. I don't know. Because I'd hate to not get anything. You know what I mean? Like, so we kind of threw it all in together.
If I remember right, the first question was about $4.47 million.
Okay.
And the second question was $350,000?
Sure.
And that was to deal with the SRF-funded positions that we were hoping to catch on. For people listening into the meeting, reoccurring is very important when we're talking about one-time expenses. If you don't make it reoccurring, any wage increase you give, under the auspices of the approved, hopefully approved referendum, are done at the end. And we, as a school district, then need to come back and find those dollars to keep that wage increase. We know that wages only go up, they don't come down. So whether we call it reoccurring, the statutorily language that maybe our bond council might suggest, or we call it something else, I liked what you said, I forget what the term was.
Yeah, I mean, today, I think we worked through this recurring issue last time we talked about this. And I don't have a problem with the way, the way that it's in there, provided, you know, I'll do, Jessica asked me to reread it, provided there is, there is some sense of what this timing means elsewhere in the, in the question. And so, Jessica, what I said just a minute ago was, beginning with the 2023, 2024 school year, and continuing indefinitely or until such time as the voter's resident in the district shall discontinue this authority by securing a majority of the vote in a district-wide election on a similar question. a district-wide election on a similar question or something, something like that. After the, the by clause, I'm not quite comfortable with yet, but it's either continuing indefinitely or until such time as the voters want to, want to shut it down, essentially.
I think I've read it too many times that I don't find it confusing. But we've been, but we've been talking about it. I've read it many times. So to add in something that makes it for some people more clear, that's fine with me. Like whatever, my only fear is that the addition of the, whatever you said, ongoing.
What do you mean, whatever you said?
You said.
It was beautiful.
It was beautiful. Whatever. The first part of your beautiful statement about, you know, going on forever. I think adding something like that is fine if it makes it more clear. I, I don't disagree to your point about or until, but I think that that makes it more confusing.
Well, maybe it does.
So if there's a way to.
So, but then, then if I'm a voter, so now, now.
Judy?
Yeah.
Hold on.
That's.
That's probably not the language you want to use, but indefinitely would be fine.
Right. I mean, the question I would have if I'm a voter and all you say is it's continuing indefinitely, I would say, who the hell says?
Well, you could say.
You do by voting for it or not.
You could say yes or no. It's up to you.
No, but, but you could agree with it today.
Right.
And want it to end in five years or eight years. Right. Because part, part of this is, is, I mean, this money is going to pile up pretty fast. I mean, we're going to get to four or five years and we're $25 million that we've raised through this. And people are going, I mean, people are going to do that math and they're going to wait a minute. You know? Or they'll go two or three or four or five years after that and pretty soon we're at $50 million. That's, that, that's a lot of money and people are going to say, whoa! Or, by the way, is the funding situation with the state, is that the same? You know, are property, have property values increased or decreased? You know, have, whatever, whatever the, the extenuating circumstances might be, they, they're going to be like, whoa, 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 wait a minute. I mean, are, are hands really cuffed indefinitely? That's not the way it works. I mean, it's not. Just because one, just because one, voters at one election say that they want to spend this money for a problem that is actually exists today and may exist for four or six or eight or even 10 years, but we don't know, at some point they, they may want to say, stop. You know, this is, we're done. You guys have had your 25 or 50 million bucks. Done. So that's where, that's what I'm, that's part of why I'm concerned about this. We gotta, we, we have to educate them about what, what is their right? Is it their right to stop this even after one set of electors has, has voted, has, has approved it?
There is another way to stop if that's what you intend to do. And I, I, my job is to counsel you. I do not advise you to, to not use, to, to use these monies beyond a one-year timeframe. Said another way, I am concerned if the thought is that suddenly one day we won't need these dollars, that's not going to happen.
Well, we're going to need these dollars because we've raised the revenue limit indefinitely. That's why we're going to need the dollars, right?
Because we're not getting the state aid to match. And so the other way for you to revoke this privilege without going to referendum, and it is a privilege, right, is for you not to seek a mill rate that gets you to the, the revenue limit. Now, that's a problem for school districts if you don't take up all of your authority because it's a problem that will persist thereafter.
Yeah.
So I, I, I want to just caution the board, and I hear you being fiscally prudent and I appreciate that, we're trying to do likewise, but the truth of the matter is that in five years, those dollars are still going to be needed regardless because you've already promised those in wages on a salary schedule. You can't say to somebody, this year I'm going to move your starting pay from $12 to $15, but then three years from now say, well, we, we're not really in the, you could do this, but you lose your staff. Now I'm going to need to move you back to $12. It just doesn't work that way, guys.
Then we should not use as a rationale for the referendum that the state hasn't given us money. But I mean, that, that, we shouldn't because we don't, I mean, we shouldn't. I mean, that may not be the case in four years and five years, six, eight, eight years. We don't, we don't know that. I, I have no problem with the fact that that's a, that's a problem now and we need to solve that problem, but that's not going to be a problem indefinitely.
This does a control for inflation. That's where we're at right now. For example, the cost of our, as you know, one of the, question one had to do with additional funds for heating and gasoline and diesel and all those kinds of things. Those dollars are going to be needed. I don't see those things going down in price. Maybe I'm wrong. I'd like to be wrong about that, but maybe there might be some stabilization of it.
Right.
We're starting to see some receding from that, but nonetheless, I don't see it going back to a $1.25 a gallon kind of thing. Those dollars are going to be needed, right?
I mean, those costs always fluctuate, right? I mean, that's always goes up and down.
Right. Put your wages and your labor and your health insurance and those kinds of things, that won't, that's not going down, guys.
Right. So, you know, listen, I'm not trying to gut, I'm not trying to gut the, what we're, what we're trying to do in the, in the short term. I, I just think, and so set aside all the, you know, set aside the arguments about what could or could not happen in five or six or eight years and just set that aside and focus on the, what I think is actually the key issue here, because we were talking about the mechanics of the, the referendum itself, and I want to focus on the mechanics of the question, which are not correct. They are not right. And so, and, and so, I, I just, again, want to, want to, just so there's not any misunderstanding. I'm not trying to gut this, this effort to supply the district with, with money that it needs in the short term because we're not, essentially, we're not getting what we need from the, from the state. That will not always be the case. But that's, again, that's an argument, that's a different argument. The argument here is how do we accurately portray what is going to happen after the voters approve that if they, if they do? And to, and to accurately portray it, we have to say that this is going on indefinitely.
So we could just say that, beginning with the 2023, 2024 school year and continuing indefinitely for recurring purposes consisting of operational expenses related to attracting and recruiting staff, blah, 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 all of that.
That's, as someone who wandered back into this, one other thing that struck me and that, just thinking of like layman's speak, and I don't know this exactly legally, but just wanted to bring it up. It's the, it's the, you know, 4.8 million annually, beginning with the 2023, 2024 school.
That would actually get to the same, that would do it.
Right. No.
No?
Because there's no time, there's, annually for three years or six years or?
Oh, fair enough. Okay.
I mean, a combination.
But Adam makes a great point. A combination of both, I mean, to Adam's point annually and then Diana's point, beginning with 2023, 24 school year indefinitely.
And continuing indefinitely.
Continuing and, I mean, add those two together and I think we've got something.
Well, I'm going to run them past legal, if you're comfortable with that, and then if they're not able to do as proposed, then I might ask Allison, our bond counselor, to be at, or at least call in to our next meeting. I appreciate the feedback on this.
Thanks for clarity on the sunset, too, because that was my other question about, like, what is the mechanism for ending this at any point if, you know, if the citizens decide or the board decides? I think that was kind of.
There's two ways I think you could do it. Probably the last, second way is probably the luckiest way. Thank you for the feedback.
The other, the two thoughts I had, kind of similar, that it's, it's a pretty simple statement, which I like because I worry get to referendum questions that are super long and then they just get confusing and to read through. I did, the recurring purposes phrase also kind of felt a little awkward to me, but I think maybe with some of those other adjustments, then that makes sense. But then the other thought I had is, does it make sense to reorder the list of things to put maintaining current programs and services first, to plant that in the seed that like, this is what we need to survive, let alone add things on?
I don't think you can do that. And the reason you can't do that is because I, my guess is that those are in order of, of numerical value.
Dollar?
Yeah, in the, in the 4.8. We talked about this before.
Okay.
And I bet, remind me, Steve, recurring purposes there, that's, that's right out of state law, right? I mean, yeah. Okay.
I just did a quick Google search of other operational referendums this year because in April there was like 1.2 billion in referendums that passed.
Yeah.
And they're all really quite close to this. Different years and stuff, but different like things, but roughly kind of the same language.
Can I ask an annoying question? Can I put in an Oxford comma?
Oh, yeah.
Maintaining services.
It drives, it's, there's two ands and it drives me daddy.
Yeah. I'm on board with that. Good catch. I just tell my kids it's wrong when they don't put one in.
It's not wrong.
No, it is. It's just wrong.
It's not. Ask him.
You know what? I will give it to you in this instance.
There's too many ands in my brain.
There's a lot of ands.
My brain went, where's the, where's the comma? So, yeah.
I'm so generous.
I hate Oxford comma.
I love the Oxford comma.
I'm a huge fan.
I deal in contracts.
I'm just going to use the word, sequence around it, but since we can't do that.
Because you can interpret things differently, because if you don't have an Oxford comma.
So where are we, Steve? We're at by, by 4.8 million annually, beginning with the 2023, 24 school year and continuing indefinitely, right?
And continuing indefinitely for recurring purposes. If I have to have that language, you might have to say it twice and then the order that it is with a comma.
Is there, can there be multiple sentences? Could we break that apart into two sentences then?
I think it has to be one sentence.
I think it has to be one sentence.
Because it's a question.
No, but she gets back to this, just reading it through as a voter.
All the more reason why we have to do a really good job of educating people.
Well, and that was going to be, that was my other reaction is reading this, like, there's the part of me that loves the simplicity and then my other thought was this is going to need a robust PR, whatever, behind it.
I mean, we had to do the same thing with the last one.
Right.
And I don't think it's bad saying it twice after that, 2023, 24 school year indefinitely for recurring purposes.
Yeah, that.
Hmm. That ought to, it's sort of odd to have that comma after school year, but, because I don't know what that clause that that comes from is, but whatever.
They're just, they know they can't have it that period, so they're like, we'll just throw a comma in there.
And continuing indefinitely, that's my fight, not that comma.
I was thinking about a calendar on this, board members. If this were to be something the board would want for the November Board of Education, excuse me, ballot, we'd actually have to have this approved by August 31st. And it would be helpful, as you may have read in my weekly update, to have all board members vote on this important decision. And it appears as though we have a couple of board members who have some well-deserved time off scheduled for August the 15th. And if you haven't noticed, I've sent out a, in my weekly update, a doodle poll with some potential dates for an alternative date from the 15th. Right now, I think we have four board members who can make the meeting on the 18th, make a meeting on the 18th, I should say, that's a Thursday night that week. And don't want to put anyone under the gun right now, but just if you don't mind looking at your calendars and just let us know, shoot me an email and then I can confirm with the media and others what that, what that next date would be.
That was the only one to check. So like, I know I have other availability that week, but I wasn't quite, normally there's like times for me to click on and that was the only thing for me to check, so.
If you went into the next week, there were two other dates.
Oh, I totally, totally bit that then.
Oh, no worries. There's a, a meeting on the 22nd is proposed and then the, no, 24th. Thank you.
Are you not sending me doodle polls anymore because you don't like me anymore or what's?
Oh, no, it was in the weekly update.
Oh, I read it. Okay, all fine.
At your convenience.
No, all fine.
Thank you, everybody, for the thoughtful feedback.
Can I update my doodle poll or do I?
I think you can.
Okay, I'll try. I didn't see an arrow.
Send an email.
Yeah, or shoot me.
Okay.
It would be helpful, though, if you could maybe let me know by Friday if you're available. Yeah, please, and thank you.
Now, let's just do the doodle poll real quick.
Yeah.
Where is it?
It's in.
Oh, doodle poll. Oh, it's even highlighted, that's why.
Don't you skip for thinking.
That's why I missed it.
Don't you, I'd skip for all the yellow stuff first and deal with that and then go for the stuff.
That's why he does that.
Someone's being a little bit over emphatic, so I'm going to skip that. Okay, now that I know where it is, I will.
Okay. So any other discussion on the referendum ballot? All right, we'll get on to action ads. We will have our consideration of our at-risk district plan and Mr. Johnson is not here.
He's not, but I'm happy to speak to it as there are not any changes from this past year to the current year. And Jessica, being our Safety and Wellness Committee Chair, I don't know if you wanted to speak.
We talked about it in our committee meeting last week and like Dr. Smell said, there are no changes this year. It was just an annual update that we have to approve.
Motion to approve. A second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none?
This is, one minor thing.
Sure.
This is more just curiosity.
Is there a comma?
Language.
Ask you.
I actually read through this in, under, on page three, monitoring student process, Talks about the team will initiate access to a multi-level system of stupers.
Stupers?
What page is that on?
Stupers?
Page three.
That's page. Family, I remember that.
Stupers?
There was another definition of that word. It's about halfway through that paragraph.
Stupers. Well, my goodness.
And with supports?
Of support. Support. There we go. Thank you for catching this word.
But you found the doodle poll, right?
I did find it. It's a lot of time.
Thank you for catching that. And certainly if there's other non-substantive by substantive, but if there's other things that are.
You're a medical person. What are you calling non-substantive?
I'd be happy to know if we can pass it along to Brian.
So Leah, will you agree to that change from stupers to supports?
I do.
Jessica, will you continue your second with that? Fantastic. So motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to 7B, consideration of the purchase of repeater and tenant to enhance school security.
Yeah, thank you again. This is something that I hope I've tried to do enough front work, voting on about why the need. For those of you new to this topic, we've had some issues with regard to police radios, being able to communicate with other first responders just due to the composition of our building. As you get closer and closer to the interior of the building, it becomes difficult for first responders to communicate. We actually had an analysis done of all of our schools and there are certain, what I'll call hotspots, that are very evident. And the solution here is to, to replace these repeater signals atop of our roof, actually at probably our most highest point of school district own property. And would anyone want to hazard a guess as to what building that would be?
It could be the high school.
It's got to be the PC.
Oh, the PC.
Yeah. I hadn't thought about that, but yeah, the PC. So it would require some work with our fiber system and then a redundancy model in the event that fiber goes down in an emergency. So the cost of these dollars would be picked up through the district's ESR funds. You may recall preliminarily having had some conversation about utilizing those dollars. It does come a bit under budget, about $254,000, if I remember putting in the packet. Some of those additional dollars would be used for pulling wires and cutting a hole in the roof and that. in the roof and that kind of, that kind of stuff. So we will likely use all of those dollars, and we're just trying to be good partners with the, with the villages, and we know this is a considerable expense, so we ask for the board's thoughtful consideration. And might I just please extend a note of gratitude to Chief Doug Veerick? Doug has been instrumental in taking the, the lead in this in partnership with me.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to eight, citizens' comments. All right, nine is our future agenda items. As always, if you have any to add to the list, feel free to send an email to Steve or myself, and we'll get those on the agenda. 10 is our schedule of next meetings, just pointing out our annual meeting is next Monday, the 8th, at 6:00 at the Intermediate Center.
Our board dinner's on Tuesday, right?
And our board dinner is on.
Correct.
Yes, Tuesday.
If you haven't had a chance yet to fill out your order, please feel free to just complete that in a little Google survey, and I'll get that to Diana.
Okay.
I didn't highlight that one, sorry.
I saw that Darryl wasn't home.
Oh, boy. I knew we had to approve, so.
And moving on to number 11.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Red, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries for your adjournment. Thank you.
All right.